The time is on us. Let me say good evening to everyone. It's 6:01 PM. Let me also preface calling this meeting to order that this meeting is being recorded. Those of you who are on video components of the meeting, those also being recorded. And the meeting immediately will be posted on the city's website for public viewing. So I just wanted to preface this meeting. So at this time, I'm Darryl Grinnell, Mayor of the City of Natchez. I'm going to call the regular meeting teleconference of the Mayor Board of Alderman, April 28th, the year 2020. The time is 6:02 PM. I will call it to order. First order of business is that we have Reverend Charles Bartley, who will provide us with the opening prayer for our meeting. So at this time, I say good evening to Reverend Charles Bartley.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Reverend Bartley.
Let us pray. God of all creation, the God of all people, in spite of the circumstances and situations in which this community finds itself because of COVID-19. Before we make any requests, please, or petitions before you, we first just want to say thank you. You told us in all situation and all circumstances to give thanks. And we thank you for just being our God and allowing us to be your people. We thank you, dear God, for the leadership of this community, the political, social, civic, business, all of the leadership of this community. We thank you. We thank you in particular, dear God, for the leadership of Mayor Darryl Grinnell. Thank you for having uniquely qualified and gifted him for such a time as this. Thank you for the leadership that has taken actions to protect and save the lives of those in this community. We thank you, dear God, for the doctors, the nurses, the healthcare workers, and all of those who do those things to take care of our sick. The office workers, the custodians, and those who are often, we don't think about. Yes, dear God, we do thank you. We thank you for the many unnamed, untitled, unrecognized, and often unappreciated workers who still daily at great risk to themselves and their own family provide for our safety and comfort. Yes, dear God, we have much to be thankful for. Thank you for the wisdom, knowledge, that you've given the doctors and nurses, the scientists, and all of those who seek a solution to this situation. But we know that healing power is in your hand. Dear God, we pray for those who have been personally affected, not merely inconvenienced, but who've been affected to sick, to bereaved, to hurting businesses of our community, the unemployed, our children whose education have been interrupted. Dear God, we pray for those who will continue. We pray that you will continue to give our leadership, knowledge, wisdom, and the fortitude to continue to make sound decisions in the best interest of the total community. Dear God, I pray that you continue to give us the spirit of cooperation and unity that will result in our community being safe, and you are God, being glorified. Amen.
Amen. And thank you, Reverend Bartley, for providing us with the prayer. So at this time, I am requesting for Chief Walter Armstrong, Police Chief for the City of Natchez, if you would lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Yes, sir, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Armstrong. Prior to the roll call of the city clerk, this community lost a longtime engineer, professional engineer. He was one of the partners of Jordan Kaiser and Sessions. Mr. Hayden Kaiser Jr. passed away earlier this week. I'm requesting that we pause for a few moments of silence in his memory and in his honor, please. Let us pause. Thank you. So at this time, I am requesting for the city clerk to perform the roll call.
Yes, sir. Alderman Mathis, here. Alderman Frazier, here. Other woman, Smith, here. Other woman, Irving, here. Alderman Davis, here. Alderman Dillard, here. All first mechanics from there.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And also let the minutes reflect that city attorney is also present in this teleconference meeting. Mr. Attorney, will you verify that you are present?
I'm present. Thank.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Next item on the agenda, and let me just remind all of the callers that are participating in this meeting, if you would keep your telephones on mute, that helps to cut back on any background noise. And those members that participate, make sure that you unmute when you get ready to respond. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. First set of minutes are the minutes of the regular meeting of March 24th, the year 2020, with editorial changes. What's the pleasure of the board as relate to the...
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Mathis.
I move the regular minutes of March 24, 2020, they have been checked, the editorial changes have been made.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Mathis and second by Alderman Davis. Unreadiness on the motion. Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote on those minutes?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. The minutes of March 24th of the year 2020 have been unanimously approved. The next set of minutes are the minutes of the special call board meeting of March 26th of this year, the year 2020, with editorial changes. What is the pleasure of the board as relate to those minutes of the special call meeting?
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Mathis.
I move the minutes of the special call meeting of March 26, 2020, the editorial changes have been made.
I second.
Okay, there it is. It's been moved and it's been seconded by Alderman Smith. Unreadiness on the motion. Hearing none. How do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier? Alderman Frazier, how do you vote? Unmute your phone. Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Alderman Smith.
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, the minutes have been unanimously approved of the special call board meeting of March 26th of this year, 2020. Next item on the agenda is to welcome visitors. So at this time, I'm going to recognize Mr. William Thames, who is the chairman of the COVID-19 Task Force, just to kind of give the board an update on how we're doing here in our community. And he has posted a graph, those of you who have your laptops or your smart devices in front of you. Mr. Thames.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you all know that we've been working really hard trying to keep abreast of what's happening with the coronavirus in our community in this corner of Mississippi, as well as in the state as a whole. We track our numbers locally and statewide on a daily basis, as well as nationally. And we try to keep the mayor, as well as you, the Board of Aldermen, updated on an ongoing basis of changes. We had been hopeful that we were beginning to see a peaking of the figures, and those being the number of newly identified cases, the number of new deaths, and certainly the number of local cases and the statistics here in Adams County, those being hospitalized patients, as well as new deaths, new positive cases in our long-term care facilities, as well as in the detention center out on Highway 84. We had last week seen the highest numbers of hospitalized and newly identified cases that we had thus far in our two months now experience with the coronavirus. And it began to appear that we were indeed leveling and perhaps maybe even bending a curve, turning the curve and starting to see reducing numbers, at least leveling off. But unfortunately, today, we did receive new data that showed a sudden jump in new hospitalized patients, as you can see on this graph. That is that top red diamond line at the very top, that's showing patients with the coronavirus infection that are hospitalized. The green line below it shows hospitalized patients that are suspected to have the coronavirus, and the hospital is still waiting on test results. They've tested negative for the flu, and the hospital is waiting to see if their coronavirus test results are positive. The lower four, two lines, the tan line, and then the blue line at the bottom, represents patients, the tan represents patients who are in the hospital who have had to be moved into ICU. And the blue line with the diamonds indicates patients who are on the ventilator. As you can see, for nearly a week, that was starting to trend downward. And that was a really positive sign, we were thinking. As you can see, just in the most recent day, that has moved up. I realize that one day's data does not a trend make. However, this shows us that we're still not out of the woods as a state, nor are we as a county. We have 11 patients in the hospital here. I think the county has, yesterday, we had 19 patients. I can't tell you how many exactly today. An important thing that has changed in the last week or so is that our county is beginning, Natchez Merit Hospital is beginning to transfer patients away because Natchez Merit Hospital is eager to begin being able to resume some other vital healthcare delivery. We've had a few very unfortunate situations where patients are, have been hesitant to come to the hospital because they're afraid they're going to be at risk of exposure. And that has had some really serious detrimental effect on some of our local citizens. And so the hospital's beginning to shift some of its focus back to being able to perform elective surgeries and get the word out to everyone that they will be safe at the hospital and not be exposed to the coronavirus. As the CEO of the hospital expressed it today, we need people to know that they're going to be safer at the hospital from the coronavirus than they would be maybe at Walmart or one of our other currently essential businesses that are open here in town. So the real message here is that, I know you know that the White House, a number of weeks ago, had told us that we shouldn't begin thinking that we're out of the curve and being able to lessen some of our precautions until we've demonstrated 14 consecutive days of reduction of these metrics of the situations I've just been describing. And we by no means are there. We haven't seen even a day of consistent reduction of metrics around the impact of this coronavirus and the disease of COVID-19 on our state or on our local community. And all of that needs to be weighed as you, who are taking care of us here in this community, make decisions. And Mayor, that's my update. Thank you. But if anyone has any questions, if I'm able to answer them, I will.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Thames as relate to COVID-19?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Who is that, Mr. Frazier? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dillard. Go ahead, Mr. Dillard.
Yes, what is the capacity, I guess we can measure it in the ventilators of the Merit Hospital here in Natchez?
I believe we have 23 ventilators here. So the good news is here, we today, earlier today, this may have changed, but earlier today, we are in the best situation in terms of acuity locally of our coronavirus or COVID-19 patients that we have been throughout the whole experience. Today, earlier, we only had one patient on ventilator. The hospital had succeeded over the weekend in weaning two patients off the ventilator, which is a wonderful thing. We've had patients here on a ventilator for more than 30 days, a few incidences of those. Today, we only have one of our 23 available ventilators in use, which is a really happy thing.
And another question would be, the...
Go ahead, Mr. Dillard.
The metrics, you know, from day to day, if you did percentages, they would be, you know, one case can throw those numbers out. But over a 14-day period, again, what is our, I guess, infection rate? You generally spoke to it that it's still trending up. Is that the, is that the general answer to that question? Or is there, I guess what I'm looking at is day to day, but over a 14-day period because it gives me a better sense of where we are on the curve in Adams County.
Well, yeah, I understand your question, and it's a very good question. Generally speaking, we still are, we have not shown a very certain sign of having peaked yet in the state in terms of the spread and new cases of the coronavirus throughout the state or locally.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other, thank you, Mr. Dillard. Are there any other questions for Mr. Thames? Okay, thank you, Mr. Thames, for giving the board an update on the task force and where we are in respect to statistics, not only here in our community, but statewide. I really appreciate you providing that update to the board this evening. All right, moving on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? If not, moving on, county business. Is there any county business before this board? If not, we'll move on to department. Okay, thank you, President Gray. Next, Department Directors' Reports. Justin Dollar with Public...
Good afternoon, Mayor and Board. The first thing I wanted to bring forth, seeking permission to allow the mayor to execute the documents to declare Brittany Daniels as the FEMA/MEMA liaison for the City of Natchez.
Okay, you've heard the request. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move, I'll move.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Mathis and second by Alderman Irving. Any unreadiness on the motion? Hearing none. Alderman Mathis, how do you vote? Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you, yes, ma'am, Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, thank you, sir. Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, the request has been unanimously approved. Next, Justin.
Yes, sir. The only other thing is I was, wanted to check back to see if you've been able to give any more thought to the special call meeting where we were speaking about our open employment with our staff as far as when we'll be able to possibly post those for employment.
Okay, we will probably have a special call meeting this week, and more specifically, Thursday. And that will be one of the items that the board will deal with, Justin.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you, Justin. Next, Ms. Fay Minor with Recreation Department.
Mayor, James Fay and I are up here in the office along with Deputy Clerk Turner to open the bid for the grass cutting.
Okay, and let me announce to the board and to the public that the bid opening process that is about to commence is actually being filmed for documentation purposes. So they will be opening it while it is being videoed. Okay, you may proceed.
All right, the first bid that Fay will open is from U.S. Lawns. The camera is open. We can see you, James.
Yes, I'm looking, I'm looking at you. Go ahead.
All right, you're going to talk the two prices. Can you see it? All right, hold on. The first bid, I said it was some U.S. lawns. Hold on. They didn't use our forms.
Be patient, they didn't use our forms.
They didn't use our bid forms, the way they priced this, again, U.S. lawns. They didn't break it down as requested. They have annually $28,212.63, and per month, $2,351.05. Again, U.S. lawns, annually, $28,212.63 per month, $2,351.05, U.S. lawns.
Okay, James, if you don't mind, take that and just briefly hold it up to the camera, you know, so that it can actually be seen. So each bid, just briefly hold it up. That's good. Thank you.
Can you see it?
That's good, that's fine. You can proceed.
All right, next bid is Southern Lawns LLC. Mayor, you are on a slight delay, so I think it's causing you to not hear them straight away. So just be aware that you do have a slight delay on your audio.
And we do have 60.
All right, again, this one is Southern Lawns LLC. They did submit on the provided bid form. All right, for Duncan Park, $62,000 even per year. Duncan Park, $62,000 per year. And then for the other five neighborhood parks, Jack White, North Natchez Park, Madison Street Park, Cherokee Park, and Concord Park, $32,000 per year. Again, $32,000 per year. And this is again from Southern Lawns LLC, and in front of the camera. The next bid is from Grass Chopper Lawn Service. Again, Grass Chopper's Lawn Service. They're priced Duncan Park for, my assumption is, for one year, $37,000. Again, $37,000. And the cost to cut the other, gee, okay, hold on. Okay, there it is. And then the cost to cut the other five neighborhood parks, again, Jack White, North Natchez, Madison Street, Cherokee, and Concord, $13,500. Again, $13,500, one part of the bid and other part of the bid. Flip all this together. The next bid is TNT Lawn Care and Irrigation.
Repeat that again.
TNT Lawn Care and Irrigation. All right. Duncan Park, $84,000 per year. Duncan Park, $84,000 per year. And for the other five neighborhood parks, again, Jack White, North Natchez, Madison, Cherokee, and Concord, $30,000. $30,000. And here is their bid for the camera. The next bidder is Unlimited Resources. The bid of Unlimited Resources. For the five neighborhood parks, Jack White, North Natchez, Madison Street, Cherokee, and Concord, $10,850 per year. Again, 10... What did you? Okay, all right.
Sorry.
Let's go back. This is one that was not labeled to who was from on the outside. This bid is from Jeff Ross Industrial Services of Farady, Louisiana. Again, Jeff Ross Industrial Services of Farady, Louisiana. His bid for the five neighborhood parks, again, Jack White, North Natchez, Madison Street, Cherokee, and Concord, $10,850. ten thousand eight fifty, ten thousand eight fifty. And trying to find where he has. And his price for Duncan Park is twenty-nine thousand, one forty. Again, Duncan Park, twenty-nine thousand, one forty. And then the last one is going to be Unlimited Resources, correct? Okay. All right, the bid Unlimited Resources. The, their price to cut Duncan Park is thirty-four thousand, thirty-four thousand five hundred annually. Thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars annually. And then the cost for the other five neighborhood parks, again, Jack White, North Natchez, Madison Street, Cherokee, and Concord, twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand dollars. And again, this bid is from Unlimited Resources. Staff is requesting the board receive and take under advisement.
You've heard the request of the, yes, Ms. Mathis?
Ms. Chair of Recreation, I'll move.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Alderwoman Mathis, Chair of Recreation, and it's been second by Alderwoman Sarah Carter Smith. Unreadiness on the motion?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes, unreadiness, Mr. Frazier?
Yes, I would like, give me those figures again on that number two bid, I didn't get the name of that one.
The second bid, I think that was.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Give it to me again, please.
One second.
All right, that should be Southern Lawn, correct, Mr. Frazier?
I think it's, was it Hopper Grass, some?
Grass Choppers?
Grass Chopper, okay, yeah.
Grass Chopper Lawns. Grass Chopper Lawn, you are with the third one. Yes.
Okay.
And the second one was Southern Lawn.
Thirty-seven thousand for Duncan Park.
Okay.
Hold on, and thirteen thousand five hundred for the neighborhood parks.
All right, Mr. Dillard, unreadiness?
Yes, sir, Miss Mayor, I would like to suggest that during the vetting process that we include both the Public Works Director and the Attorney in vetting these bids. Thank you.
Okay. Father unreadness on the motion. Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, and, and hold up. James, if you don't mind, put your phone on mute. All right, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. And also, let's make sure that in the vetting process of going through those bids, that Mr. Justin Dollar of Public Works and City Attorney Latham participate in that process. Thank you so much. Anything else, Ms. Minor, from your department?
No, Mr. Mayor, that'll be all.
Okay, moving on, Mr. Johnston?
Evening again, Mayor and Board. I provided you a draft report the other day with your respective packets. Natchez Railroad Upgrade Safety Improvement Program. Staff is requesting a motion to approve reimbursement number seventeen to the Natchez Railroad as stated below. Federal funds, thirty-three thousand, five ninety-two and one cents. Local funds provided by the railroad, eleven thousand, one ninety-seven and thirty-three cents total for reimbursement number seventeen, forty-four thousand, seven eighty-nine and thirty-four cents.
Okay, you've heard the request. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Is it, was it Q. Alderwoman Mathis?
Irving.
Oh, Alderwoman Irving, okay. It was moved by Alderwoman Irving, second by Alderman Davis. Unreadiness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, the, it is unanimous that the motion passed to approve the reimbursement number seventeen based on the request. Moving on, James?
Citywide Water Improvement Project, that's the city's two thousand and eighteen block grant and the SRF. Staff is requesting approval of change order number one, totaling two thousand seven eighty-eight to adjust final quantities and distribution items to actual quantities used in conjunction. Again, it is an amount of two thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars. That will increase the total contract with Greenbrier from one million, seven hundred thousand five eighty, one million, seven oh three, three sixty-eight.
Okay, you've heard the requests of the community. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it was moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderwoman Irving, that we approve the change order in the amount of two thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and zero cents. Unreadiness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderwoman, I'm, I'm sorry, Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, Madam Clerk, that the change order be approved. James?
In addition, staff is requesting a motion to approve payment for the following invoice to our contractor, Greenbrier Consult, Greenbrier DSLP, invoice number four, in the amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand, eight twenty-two and sixty-five cents. And please note, the city's block grant portion, as stated below, is nine hundred and nineteen dollars and eighteen cents due to this invoice consisting primarily of generators, which is not an eligible cost for this program, for the block grant program.
Okay, you've heard the request. What's the pleasure of the board? Do I hear a motion that we approve invoice number four? In the amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-five cents? Is there a motion? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, who was that, please?
Irving.
Alderwoman Irving, is there a second? Is there a second? Do I hear a second on the motion?
Second.
Who is that, Alderman Dillard, okay? Unreadiness on the motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, just one question.
Hearing none. Yes, Mr. Dillard?
Are these generators, like I think generators are, that they produce electricity from some sort of other fuel source? What are generators?
Mr. Johnston, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, they, they are backup generators, yes, to be placed at several of Water Works's facilities, yes. And part of the scope of work.
And I'm just questioning, why wouldn't this not be included in the portion that the Water Works is paying for?
It is. It is, they are paying for the generators, it's the city's block grant that is not.
Oh. Got you, okay. Thank you, that, thanks for my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard. Is there father unreadness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote? Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, it is unanimous. The invoice number four has been unanimously approved. Anything else, Mr. Johnston?
No, sir, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. At this time, Mr. Tony Moon with Natchez Water Works?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Board. Yeah, we have, you should have received the, the support letters and resume from Ms. Premier Pam Murphy for a request of the Board of Water Commissioners and myself for her reappointment for another four years now. So that's my request.
I make that motion to approve.
Second?
I second it.
All right, it's been moved by Alderwoman Smith and second by Alderman Davis to reappoint Ms. Premier Murphy to the Board of Water Commissioners. Unreadiness on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none, Alderwoman, go ahead, Ms. Mathis?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm totally in support of this appointment. But I would like, since we can't do it now because of COVID-19, as soon as we can, we need to have a meeting with the, with the reappointee, reappointee because of the situation with the budget over there. We were supposed to meet with each one of those members. And since now we're dealing with reappointments, we need to go on and, and, and meet at least with the reappointee, if not the entire board. Thank you.
Okay, I will set that up for you. Father unreadness on the motion? Hearing none, how do you vote, Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier? How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And how do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, it has been unanimously approved for the reappointment of Ms. Premier Murphy to the Board of Water Commissioners. That's all you have, Mr. Moon?
Oh, yeah, that's all I've got. Thank you, everybody.
All right, any other Department Directors? Hearing none, moving on to city official reports. And I will just move in numeric order of the board, starting with Ward One, Alderwoman Mathis.
Very quickly, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Only thing that I have to report is that there was a recreation meeting on the pool heater information. And the people present was, were Mr. Johnston, Mr. Waycaster, Ms. Minor, I think it was Green, Mr. Ware, and yourself, Mr. Mayor. And they just brought us up on the information for the, of the heater, the size of the different heaters, the amount that they might cost, what they would cover in terms of BTUs and energy, and information of that kind. But they're not ready, I think they're going to bring all that sort of information forward. All of it will be reexplained to the board once they're ready to bring it for, for approval. Am I not right, Mr. Mayor, is that what we decided?
You are correct, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and that ends my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mathis. Alderman Frazier?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like, I'm gonna be brief, brief. As you know, last week, I think Natchez lost one of its oldest citizens. I can't think of the gentleman's name off, he's frankly, he was a hundred years old, a hundred and nine years old. He passed away about last week, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Winston, yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Winston, one of our oldest citizens. I was, I would like to say, Mr. Mayor, let me say this. I had, this past weekend, we had a seniors supper Sunday, Love Thy Neighbor. It was sponsored by the Word of Faith, Bishop Robert and Betty Cage, Alderman Billy Joe Frazier, the H, the H U B B Network, Dr. Robin Cage Fudd and Dr. Maurice Fudd, and Dr. Bahati Harden, the daughter of the late George Harden, Shay Harden of Ward Two. Southwest Wellness Association of Mississippi, Ms. Rita King Frazier, and Heart to Heart by Tawana Carter. What they, what they did, these, these sponsors got together and they approached me with supper, supper Sunday, feeding the elderly in, in Ward Two. And I thought it was a brilliant idea that these people came up with. So we got together this past Sunday, well, it really was Sunday, it was first Sunday, but we delivered the meals to the seniors in Ward Two. And they were very, very appreciative of what we did. And it was just an overwhelming success. And again, I'd like to thank these people. I also had some volunteers to come out. Ms. Monica Smith, who, who gave away some gift cards, volunteers such as Ms. Rita Given, Nancy McFarlane, Ms. Mary Lee Jackson, Sanders, Standard. She made match, Ms. Annabelle White, Courtney Yerby, and Ms. Clelinda Turner. And also my grandkids, they, we, like I said, we just, just passed out these meals and Mr. Ben Tucker, who donated some, who donated some money too. I'd say we got together in this whole ward and passed out, you just should have seen the things when he went to the door and knocked on the door and brought me this meal, they was like, oh, this is very, very nice. And I think that, like I say, they came with this idea. And it was just a beautiful thing that we could do something like this. And we're gonna, we're planning on, I think in the near future, we're planning on doing this again. I don't know when, we're gonna get together with these, these young ladies and do it again, these gentlemen. And also, I'd like to challenge the, the, the young men in my, in my ward, and not only my ward, all over town, step up because every time something happens, look like the ladies are in front. So with that being said, Mayor, that is the end of my report.
Okay. All right, thank you, Alderman Frazier. And also, I'd like to thank all of those individuals who prepared and donated towards the, the program that you provided to the seniors in our community. Thank each of them and God bless all of them for what they did. All right, Alderwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one thing that I would want to bring up in my report is our financial outlook for the upcoming rest of this fiscal year and the next fiscal year. And I attended a webinar that the Stennis Institute put on. And they gave us a very good outlook on what we're going to be expecting for the state of Mississippi. And also talked about how to dive deeply into what we can expect within our own city limits. And one of the things that was mentioned was getting, you know, with the Department of Revenue offers data for us to use. I mean, actual numbers for us to use as far as every business and what kind of sales tax, taxes we get from those respective businesses. So my thought is, I would, I would really like our board, because it's very difficult to get all six of us together at one time to consider. And I know other cities are doing this and have done this in, in situations like this, just a small mini-committee. And I feel like with the experience of Dan Alderman, Alderman Dillard, and Alderwoman Mathis, and, and myself, we could be a mini-committee to get together and, and of course, Mayor, you can attend as well. But to really kind of dive deep into our budget, into our finances, and see where we're going to have to consider. Because we need a short-term and a long-term plan, because this isn't, this is going to take four years for us to probably fully recover. And that's their prediction through economists for our state. And we could begin the process and, and immediately come up with a plan and that we could present to the board, we wouldn't make no decisions, present to the board for them to, for us all to look at together and then decide, decide as a board if we, you know, what we think is doable and what's not doable. So it's just really a way to quickly dive deep and try to come up with some options to get us through this tough economic time we're facing. And so my motion would be that the board would approve this small financial committee. committee to get together, uh, with the mayor and the city clerk to start, and, and we're probably, you know, might need to bring in some input from the department directors as well, but anyway, start this committee and dive in deep and see what we think immediately, we can come up and, and maybe some longer-term plans as well. That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Alderman Dillard, uh, any unreadness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote? Alderman Frazier, how do you vote? Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
You're muted, Alderman Frazier.
Can you hear me?
Now I can, go ahead. How do you vote?
I have some unreadness.
Well, see, I didn't hear you, you had your phone on mute. Alright, what's your unreadness?
What, what, I think before we do anything like this, Mr. Mayor, we need to get together, not on this phone and this, we need to go into more details on, too. I think this should be done when we all get together in the public, not by telecom. So, like I say, this, this, this is something that we really, really, really need to go into talk seriously about, just from the committee, I think the whole board should be in on it, not just no committee, we all should be on it, and not, and I'm saying again, this should be done when we all get together and face to face with each other, and, and with the public there, whatever, but like I say, that, that's the way I feel, Mr. Mayor, that's my unreadness on.
Alright, is there any other unreadness?
Yes.
Uh, Alderwoman Irving, go ahead.
I agree with Alderman Frazier, I think that we all should be, uh, discussing the finances, so that way everybody will be on one accord with the finances and where we are with our budget.
Okay. Any other unreadness? Hearing none?
Yes.
Uh, Alderman Davis?
Uh, yes, I think all of us should be on this meeting, I think we should amend it for all the, all six Aldermans to be in, involved in that meeting.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, may I clarify one thing? This is-
Uh, go ahead, uh, Ms. Smith?
The clarification is, it's not to make any decisions, it's just to look at things and maybe come up with suggestions. It's a smart way to do it, a lot of cities are doing it, it's nothing to do with leaving anyone out, it's just a quick way to get together and really dive deep and look into some things. It's not anything about making one decision, just suggestions, thoughts, and then the whole board would look at it as well. But we have, typically in our budget meetings, things get very, very long and drawn out, and we're gonna have to make some decisions quickly, and I thought this would be a quick way, and I thought it's a smart way to do it.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Uh, yes, Mr. Frazier?
I, I think-
Mr. Frazier?
I, I, I respect what Alderman, what she, Alderman Smith says, but we are moving too fast. If you want a plan for the future of Natchez, everybody on this board should be involved in this, I know she talking about the committee, but like I say, we all should be in there to voice our opinion as one, because like I say, we are voting on the future of Natchez, we don't need no committees, no little sidebar committee, because that's what's been happening now, we had too many committees trying to do things, so I think we all should be there together.
Okay, any further unreadness?
Yes, may I say something?
Uh, Ms. Mathis?
Yeah, I-
Go ahead.
I don't wanna be a part of a small group, but I do know that in the past, over two other administrations, we did have a budget committee, uh, the first budget committee, I think it was under, uh, uh, two terms ago, was Mr. Mr. Gray, who's now supervisor, and I think Mr. Dillard were very close, and they looked at it, and we've talked about doing something similar to this in terms of the, the budget coming up, for instance, a small group should have looked at or should be looking at, because this is April, the insurance, so that we can get straight with the insurance, uh, what's gonna come to the budget for that, uh, we should also be looking forward in, in terms of what the fire protection is gonna be, uh, required from the county, those were the kinds of things to alleviate what everybody is, is talking about, but I have no problem doing it as a whole board, not, but I do know, we do need to look at what, number one, budget preparation, and number two, where we're gonna be looking at each, looking at our, our gaming revenues, at prospective gaming revenues, whatever's left, what, and what depends on when they start back up, and looking at, uh, where we are with, 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 with sales tax, I think those were the numbers. But if we could all get together, and we've talked about having a, a conference call to look at this, I don't have a problem with it being done either way, as long as it's done. But I do wanna give the history of the fact that, uh, in two previous administrations, we did have two people, and I was now one of them, that were look, that was looking at the budget to see what they could find out, what they, what they could ascertain, and then bring it back to the board, because they really were good at working with those figures on it, that's all I just wanted to share, thank you.
Okay, uh, any further unreadness on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Hearing none, uh, yes, Mr. Dillard?
Yeah, I, I think Alderwoman, uh, Mathis was carried, right? This is a fact-finding effort here, is to cull through the budget and compare revenues to the expenses and to bring recommendations. There's no voting going on at this point, this is a fact-finding, small committee that can move, uh, with, uh, to get information back to the Aldermen that they can digest and, and, and get, get a grip around of this, so that we can proceed forward. But, uh, again, if, if we wanna do it all, all together, you know, i- i- in a quorum, uh, recommend a, a, a quorum, and it'll be open to the public, and a lot of this discussion will have to be, uh, uh, along those lines, uh, and it'll, it will be longer, and it will be very hard. I just don't want anyone to get the wrong impression, there's not even voting, uh, that would take place. This is fact-finding to bring information forward to the board and the mayor, so that we can make decisions about how we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, uh, Ms. Mathis?
I move to defer, uh, any, any, any vote on this measure till we have the special call meeting on Thursday, I think you said it was gonna be a special call meeting on Thursday, is that not right? So I move to defer.
Uh, yes. Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Moved, uh, there's been, it's been seconded by Alderwoman Irving, uh, that, uh, action be deferred until we have a special call meeting Thursday. Unreadness on this motion? Hearing none, how do you vote, Alderwoman Mathis?
I vote aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Uh.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And how do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, it has been deferred, and, uh, decision will be made Thursday.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am, before I end my report, may I say-
Yeah, go ahead, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I do want to thank, um, Alderwoman, Alderman Dillard and Alderman Mathis, Alderwoman Mathis for understanding the point of this, and I would, I would let the other three handle the insurance right now and start meeting to help us get ahead on that. We get so bogged down, so close to when we have to make decisions, that wise decisions aren't always made, so, anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Alderwoman Smith, and, and I do agree, uh, you can work much more expeditiously if, you know, three Aldermen work on this section, uh, three Aldermen work on that, because eventually, it's gonna come before the entire board, before any decisions are made, but it's a good method of moving much more expeditiously by using the committee method. Um, so, I, I, I strongly urge the board members to consider that, uh, by Thursday's meeting, is to use that method. Alright, uh, moving on to Alderwoman Irving, your committee, I mean, your, uh, report.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to just mention two about Mr. Jesse Winston being one of the, being one of, and I do believe he may have been one of the oldest members of Ward Four, um, possibly one of the oldest members in the city of Natchez. And so, what I would like us to do, if all possible, Mr. Mayor, is that we, um, come up with some kind of way to recognize him as being the oldest member of the community in the form of a plaque. Um, I did some investigation, and I spoke to Mr. Daryl White to see, did he possibly, him and Mr. Um, um, gosh, I can't think of his name right now, um, had gone and interviewed him, and, um, he said yes, that he had, and so hopefully, the markers that we see along St. Catholic Street, hopefully, some of that information that he shared, uh, could possibly be placed on one of the markers, and I would also like to see, is it possible that the city could recognize Mr. Winston, um, with some form of plaque or something of that nature, Mayor, if all possible?
Okay, uh, so, you and I will look at something and see what we can come up with, Alderwoman Irving.
Okay, and that was Mr. Mark Lafrances, that is who Mr. Daryl White had spoke with, was Mark Lafrances, that on by and got some information. Um, the other thing I'd like to-
But also on that note, uh, I did, uh, present a proclamation, uh, on behalf of the Mayor Board of Aldermen, uh, to the family honoring, uh, his life, so, if you don't mind, Alderwoman Irving, will you offer a motion that, uh, ratify it and put it in the minutes?
Yes, sir, uh, do it now? I'd like to make a motion-
Yes, if you-
Concerning the proclamation for Mr. Jesse Winston, and that'd be placed in a minute, please.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved a second that we ratify the proclamation that was presented to the family, uh, for Mr. Jesse Winston honoring his life, uh, as a citizen of Natchez. Uh, unreadness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Uh.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alright, it's been unanimously approved, Madam Clerk. Uh, Alderwoman Irving, what else do you have?
Okay, I also had my mailbox there, which everyone probably received a copy of it, it's in a file copy, this was on the Natchez Housing Authority, it was, uh, addressed to you, Mayor, about the retiring of Mr. Alan Ingram, and he will be retiring on April 30th, 2020, from the Natchez Housing Authority. And, um, one of the things I would like to hear, Mayor, we had asked to possibly speak with the director and some of the members of the Board of the Natchez Housing Authority, and so is it possible, since it's gonna be under a new director, and her name is Ms. Janice Herbert, will be the new executive director of the Natchez Housing Authority effective May 1st, 2020? And so, uh, congratulations to her, and congratulations in his retiring, but, uh, also could we possibly meet with some of the members, maybe not now, but at some point in time in the near future, Mayor? And that ends my report.
Okay, and, uh, thank you for bringing that up, Alderwoman Irving. Uh, of course, uh, Mr. Uh, Alan Ingram is retiring after thirty-plus years as the director for the Housing Authority, as Ms. Irving mentioned, um, and he has, uh, dedicated himself, uh, here to the city of Natchez, uh, and of course, uh, we also, uh, congratulate his predecessor, who will, uh, be taking up the torch. Uh, Alderwoman Irving, uh, I will enter, I'll be happy to entertain the motion that we adopt a resolution of appreciation to Mr. Ingram for his years of service.
Okay, so moved.
Is there a second? Is that a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman, second by Alderman Dillard, uh, unreadness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Aldo, Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Madam Clerk, the resolution has been unanimously approved, a resolution of, of, uh, appreciation to Mr. Alan Ingram. Alright, uh, Alderwoman Irving, anything else? That was your, that was the end of your report, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Alderman, Alderman Davis?
Uh, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I wanna go back to the, talk about the, the committee for the budget committee, why don't we do it like this?
Uh, go ahead.
Put some of the, uh, senior members of the, uh, mix it up, put a senior member of, on the board, Alderman, with the budget committee, and put senior member with, uh, insurance, mixed up with, uh, the, uh, the members that have been on the board le- uh, for a less amount of time.
Uh, yes, uh, that's a very good method, uh, that way both, uh, uh, committees, uh, can actually have some experience, uh, with, uh, members that are freshman members, so, uh, that's a, a very good method, so, it would be the prerogative of the board on Thursday that we mix it up that way, so, um, I would be happy to-
What if I make the motion right now? I wanna make that motion right now.
Well, there was a motion to defer it until Thursday, so, why don't we just hold off until Thursday and we go from there?
Mr. Mayor?
Anything else? Uh, yes, uh, Alderwoman Smith?
I just wanna thank Alderman Davis for that recommendation, I think that's a great idea, thank you.
Uh, yes, ma'am, uh, Alderman Davis, anything else?
Uh, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Davis, uh, Alderman Dillard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, I, I do wanna say and thank my board members for their eagerness to dig into these budgeting processes, uh, and, and in some cases, uh, Mr. Mayor, we can take this up Thursday, but until we get some of this stuff on the, uh, minutes, uh, they, they, they may be obvious, but I wanna see that these actions are taken. I think we're looking, you know, at a period of time here where we know that there's gonna be, um, uh, that the, the revenues are not gonna come in as expected, and some of the things, we don't have any control over that, but some of the things we have control over are the expenditures, and for example, you know, I would be prepared, but we can do this Thursday, but anything listed in the budget that's miscellaneous, be frozen, anything listed in the, in the, uh, in the budget as a contingency, be frozen, and we can go down through the list. I think we're gonna have to look at, you know, making motions along the lines of whether we have hiring, new hiring, rehiring, part-time hiring, seasonal hiring, we're gonna be looking at a difficult situation as this next term comes around, and some of it's gonna be dependent on what we do now. Uh, so, you know, it's, 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 it's rewarding, and it's, it's gratifying to know that, uh, the participation is there, because it's gonna take some really digging in and understanding what these numbers are and how they affect. We know our sales tax are going down, that, that's obviously, if you look at what's presented now on the Department of Revenue, which is actually looking two months back, we're sixty thousand dollars behind before any of this, uh, coronavirus even came up, came into anybody's, uh, real cognizance of it, and you can anticipate between now and the end of the year, what it's gonna do, uh, to our, our revenues. So the things that we can do, remember, is that we don't have that much control over the revenue, but we do have control over the expenditures, and how we proceed from now until then is gonna be very important. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard. Uh, moving right on, uh, to the city clerk's report?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask the board to consider approving the claim stocket?
Okay, you've heard the request of the, uh, city clerk, uh, to approve, to approve the claim stocket? Uh, what's the pleasure?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Davis, it was, uh, the motion was offered by Alderwoman Smith, uh, unreadness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, your request has been approved unanimously of the doc- Madam Clerk, your request has been approved unanimously of the Docket of Claims. Uh, what's your next request?
May I ask the Board to consider approving the mini docket?
Okay, you've heard the request of the Clerk. What's the pleasure aboard?
So moved.
Okay, was that you, Alderman Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is that you, who was that, Mr. Dillard?
It was Alderman Frazier.
Oh, Alderman Frazier, sorry. It was second by Alderman Frazier. Unreadness on the motion. Ms. Mathis, I think you had unreadness?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to make sure I have everything, Mr. Mayor. And I don't, for some reason, I don't think I got a mini docket. I got the claims docket, but I don't see a mini docket. So I'm going to have to abstain when that comes through. But that's the only reason I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
Okay, um, yes, Mr. Dillard?
I, I don't have a mini docket either, so, um, I guess I'll, uh, I'll let the other Aldermen decide how they're going to vote on it. But I, I only have a claims docket, um, and it says vouchers approval document, uh, four twenty-three, twenty twenty, five twenty-seven P M. I, I, I don't, I don't see a mini docket. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we defer that until the Thursday since there's no, several people don't have it?
Right.
Okay, uh, is that a motion, um, uh?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a motion.
Second.
Okay, is there a second? Moved a second, uh, moved by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Mathis, that we defer action on approval of the, uh, mini docket until Thursday. Uh, unreadness on the motion. Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman, uh, I'm sorry, Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
I vote aye, Mayor, but again, I'm really not to vote on the mini docket nor the claims docket. So we just have that reported.
You're abstaining? All right.
Yes, sir.
All right, Alderman, uh, Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Uh, Madam Clerk, it is by majority that we defer and one abstention, uh, and that abstention was, with Ms. Irving in that process. Okay, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Sir Mayor, this next item was on the last docket, it's at Armstrong Library. I'm going to ask the Board to approve the payment to Armstrong Library in the amount of fifty-two thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-three cents.
Okay, this was an item, uh, that we did not include on the last docket. Uh, it was the prerogative of the Board to defer the action until later, until, um, I could get with the Clerk and make sure that it was the correct payment, payment place on, based on millage. Uh, so you heard the request. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Mayor, you did-
Do I hear a motion?
You did-
Yes, ma'am, uh, we did, I did get with the Clerk and we did verify that this is the correct payment, uh, based on the millage.
I move the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second, uh, is there a second?
Second.
And second by Alderman Davis, uh, unreadness on the motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote? I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Dillard.
Well, I think the question centered around that if you took what kind of payments would be made, the total amount, and divided it out over a monthly period, you would come up with a number that's about half the amount of the fifty-two thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. So the, the question is not that the, the monies are not, um, correct and they have not exceeded a budgeted amount. But it's just that, um, really more of a question of how do we make payments to the, the library? Do we make them monthly? Do we make them quarterly? Or, or how is that done to the City, the City Clerk can answer that.
Uh, Madam Clerk, do you want to respond?
Yes, sir, we see about check from the county, have one check from the county. Um, I gave this she with the millage rate on there. Every time we do checks from the county, we count out their millage and millage check out to the library. So they get it when we get ours.
How many, so then how many checks do we receive from the county? Is the Abbeelorium's money, do they come in monthly, or do they come in quarterly, or biannual?
They, they're usually monthly, uh, usually monthly, uh, Alderman Dillard come monthly.
Well, I was comparing, say, for example, this, uh, payment that, that's being requested now. And when I look back at the March docket, which is three twenty, twenty twenty, uh, at twelve forty-five P M, a payment was made to the Armstrong Library in the amount of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. So it, it, it just, the, the question again, are we making lump payments or are we making monthly things? Right, we certainly aren't making monthly things. But that's what it's gonna rate.
I include the check, I include the check, I give you the check because you got, Mayor, you have a check and you have a millage. And so it won't be that amount every month. That check was just large, Mr. Dillard. Yeah, next month it may come in.
Yeah. Uh, it's, it's actually based on, it's based on, you know, how the county, uh, collects its money. And I think everybody knows that like at the beginning of a calendar year, that's when the county actually collects a significant amount of tax dollars. So it's actually based on the amount of money that's collected by the county, you know? Certain times of the year in collections is much better than other times of the year. So when I did the research with, uh, the City Clerk, uh, that's basically what happened, Mr. Dillard. Yes, Ms. Smith, you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to kind of, uh, go behind you on that. So there will be times when it's not an even amount. We know that because of the collection, uh, collection effort. So once we make the budget on it and we have given them the total amount, then that's when it would stop. We've talked about that with Natchez Inc., the library and others.
Uh, Mr. Dillard, any further unreadness?
Uh, no, sir, I think you've answered the question. But we do realize that we have projected a millage rate, uh, two-point-five-seven-five. And the estimated millage is coming in for a city mill to a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred. Uh, that's not the exact number because you can figure it out afterwards. But we all are in agreement that the amount that was budgeted for the library is three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars, regardless of how much comes in with the revenue. Uh, and actually, if we're, if we're not lucky, the, the revenue, the millage may not make the revenue this year. So, um, anyhow, that's, that's my point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dillard. Is there any further unreadness on the motion? All right, um, uh, uh, Ms. Madam Clerk, who offered the motion and who seconded it? I just need a-
I have, Alderman Smith and Alderman Davis.
Okay, is there further unreadness? Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman, uh, Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item that you have, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor, the next item is similar. If I want to ask the Board to approve the Natchez Inc. check in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars and one cent.
Okay, uh, what's the pleasure? Uh, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a quick question on that?
Uh, go for it.
Year-to-date, what is the total amount, um, that has been given, City Clerk?
I don't have an economy that I can give it for you, uh, Alderman Smith.
I think that, um, is what we had talked about before, that, um, there was an overpayment previously because the millage went over. Millage is not set in stone every year, it changes. So there was an overage, so that's, we just need to know up-to-date, year-to-date, what it is.
Yes, and I did go back and put the last three years and they have never, never gone over. Now I did see where you, you're talking about in twenty nineteen, where it was a little payment and they did send back twenty thousand dollars and it totaled like ninety-eight thousand for the year. So the last three years they have not gone over. But I did, we were talking about when I did my research.
Thank you for that and very good, so I make that motion to make the payment.
Okay, is there a second? Moved a second, um, move, okay, it's been moved by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Davis, unreadness on the motion. Hearing none, uh, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote? Uh, sorry, unreadness, Mr. Dillard?
Uh, yeah, looking at the last, to answer, uh, Alderman Smith's question, looking at the last budget report, uh, that we've been provided with, uh, the year-to-date amount in expenses is fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. And that's, uh, you know, that's about halfway there, which is where we are through our fiscal year.
Okay, is there any other unreadness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, it's been unanimously approved. Uh, next, uh, is there anything else from you, Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk?
No, sir, thank you, Mayor, appreciate you, this is my report.
Okay, uh, moving on to the City Attorney, um, Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight I've got, uh, a resolution for the Board to approve, uh, dealing with the agreement to lease with Viking USA LLC. Of course, the Boards aware, we, uh, discussed this agreement at the last meeting. The, uh, we'd, we'd made changes after Viking had submitted us a proposal, Boarded it, authorized me to go to them, to get them to agree to our changes. Done that, so, uh, I have prepared this resolution, uh, stating that the, uh, that the city owns this parcel, it's parcel number forty-one dash one thirteen C dash twenty-seven one. Commonly known as Little Mexico, and it will be that part of that tract that's existing along the Mississippi River and extended into the Mississippi River for the, uh, docking facility to be constructed by Viking USA LLC. Uh, and once, uh, engineering studies have been done and we know the exact location of the docking facility, a, a accurate description will be, uh, prepared, uh, that would be included in the lease agreement that will result from this particular agreement. It is not, this is not a lease agreement, it is an agreement to lease. Uh, it just sets parameters from which we will work to develop a lease agreement. Uh, this resolution, uh, sets forth that the, uh, this property, uh, will be declared surplus for the purpose of leasing the land for docking facility. And that is, uh, it's not being used for municipal purposes subject to section fifty-seven dash seven dash one of the Mississippi Code nineteen seventy-two. And that the Board and Mayor and Board of Alderman, uh, have determined that this is a commercial proj- project suited to said property. Uh, tonight, uh, this resolution has two motions. One, first motion would be to declare the real property designated as parcel forty-one dash one thirteen C dash twenty-one, twenty-seven point one, a surplus property pursuant to fifty-seven, section fifty-seven dash seven dash one of the Mississippi Code annotated nineteen seventy-two. And that, uh, the commercial enterprise use of the property posed by Viking USA LLC is in the best interest of the city. So we can get a, a motion in that manner.
So moved.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Moved a second to adopt the resolution, unreadness on the motion. Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote? Is, is this unreadness you have? Alderman Mathis?
This is the one to declare the pop this surplus, am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, aye.
Uh, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Uh, right, uh, City Attorney, uh, the resolution has been unanimously, uh, adopted.
Okay, that was on the, uh, motion to declare a real property surplus. The next motion would be, uh, to, for the Board to authorize, uh, you as Mayor and the City Clerk to sign the agreement to lease the property to Viking USA, uh, and to execute same on behalf of the city.
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, Ms. Mathis, offered the motion, is there a second? Second by Mr. Dillard. Second by Mr. Dillard, unreadness on the motion. Hearing none, Ms. Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimously approved, uh, Madam Clerk, Mr. Attorney?
Uh, yes, and before I move on, uh, for those, uh, who are participating tonight, uh, and of the general public, uh, one of the points I made at, at the last meeting, uh, I would like everybody to understand is this, this docking facility will not interfere with the Ferry Street docking facility. Uh, we, we have three, we have two landings now, uh, with a Fulton Street landing, which is the northern landing on Silver Street. Ferry Street is the southernmost landing that, uh, American Queen, American Cruise Lines commonly dock at. Uh, so the location of this particular docking facility at the Little Mexico, uh, location will, will not interfere with Ferry Street. So once this, if this, uh, comes to fruition, uh, there, there should be times that we'll have as many as three cruise vessels docking, uh, under the hill. So I just want to make that. Uh, I've got, uh, one matter for Executive Session, and I had a, a matter I was going to bring up as new business, but if, if you want me to go ahead and cover it now, I will.
Uh, yes, uh, go ahead, Mr., we'll deviate. Uh, go ahead, let's take care of it, uh, Mr. Attorney?
I submitted a resolution, uh, to the, uh, Board members today that I had received today. Actually, I think, uh, James Johnson sent it to me and I'd seen it from the, uh, M M L had sent this out. It's a resolution for, uh, the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Natchez urging the United States Congress to support direct funding, federal funding to all municipalities in Mississippi to help fight COVID-nineteen and protect local citizens from the effects of the, the novel Corona bu- coronavirus. And the resolution sets forth what the U S Department of Health, Human Health and Services, uh, has done with respect to their public health emergency and the, uh, declaration by the President of the United States and the number of people it's been affecting. Uh, and, and M M L is asking all municipalities submit these resolutions to Congress to try to get this funding to help us, uh, recover from this pandemic.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, do I hear most second, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
It's, it's been moved by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Davis, unreadness on the motion. Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aldo- Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk, uh, City Attorney, that's all you have on the new business?
Yes, that's, and that's all I have, only one for Executive Session.
Okay, uh, the only thing that I have, uh, for the Board is, uh, Okay, the only thing that I have for the board is the rationale for the special call on Thursday. As you know, our stay-home order expires on Thursday. The task force, along with the task force that was created by Natchez Inc., which is the Economic Recovery Task Force, are working in synergy in order to come up with recommendations as relate to guidelines for this pandemic for our community, and we will get that, once it gets crafted, well, fine-tuned rather, and get with the city attorney on it, we'll get that disseminated to the board members so that we can deal with that issue on Thursday, and that's one of the major reasons for the special call for Thursday. And that's all I have. Again, I would like to, is there any other new business?
Mr. Mayor, my phone went out for just a minute, could you repeat the last thing you said? Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Smith, I was just simply letting the board know the rationale of why we will have a special call meeting on Thursday, and that is for the board to entertain the proposed guidelines that the task forces, both the city task force that was created a little over seven, eight weeks ago, along in conjunction with the Natchez Inc. Economic Recovery Task Force that was created, in terms of coming up with guidelines on how to proceed as relate to this pandemic. So that's the primary purpose for the special call on Thursday. All right, and that's all I have, yes ma'am, thank you, Ms. Smith. I would again like to thank the public for being on the call, and I encourage them to stay on this call while the board goes into a closed determination to determine whether or not the items qualify for executive session. So what will happen is that once the board goes into the closed determination, the city attorney will come out and announce to the public of whether or not the items qualify for executive session. If they do, the board will stay in executive session to discuss those items, but will return to the public before we adjourn this regular meeting. So I just wanted to explain the methodology that is involved in this particular process. So at this time, I will entertain a motion for a closed determination. Oh, move? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Davis, second by Alderman Irving. Dustin, does the board have the call information for the executive session?
Pam will send that now. I think-
Okay. All right, unreadness, hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, members, you should receive that call information. Let's go ahead on and switch over to the closed determination call, thank you.
This is Bob Latham, I'm coming back to announce that the board has made a determination that there are topics that can be discussed in executive session. One is concerning potential purchase of property, it involves the Department of the Water Works. The second topic is litigation, and it involves the Department of the City Clerk's Office. And as soon as we finish the executive session, we'll move back to the regular meeting, thank you.
All right, Dustin, they should be coming in here, man.
All right, we're ready.
I told them move expeditiously because I'm hungry.
That makes two of us.
Joyce Arsenal Mathis, re-entering.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mathis.
Everybody abandoned me here at the shop, so I'm with you.
There's far Smith here.
Sarah Carter Smith, thank you.
Lee Fodenberry.
Thank you, Ms. Fodenberry.
Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Who was that?
Man.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard. We're waiting on Irving Frazier and city attorney Latham.
I'm back.
Oh, Bob, I didn't hear you, all right, you must have been the first one.
Well, actually, I'm operating on two different-
Oh, well, sweet, you were already in, okay.
Yeah.
When I grow up, I'm gonna be like you.
He's been a fine student, see?
All right, who is this just called in?
Alderman Irving.
All right, thank you, Ms. Irving, we're waiting on Mr. Frazier. I'm on Mr. Frazier. My stomach is growling, Mr. Frazier. Come on, Billy Joe.
You know, Mr. Mayor, last time he did mute his phone, and now I think he's muted himself out. He may be on the line right now.
Dustin, do you see him on there? All right.
Alderman Mathis, could you announce yourself? We've had seven people come on since.
Joyce Arsenal Mathis online.
Okay, that's one, and then the only other person I haven't necessarily counted is Mr. Dillard.
I'm here.
I see you, yeah, I see you now, so I have one other caller that's not accounted for. I'm not sure if that's Billy Joe or not.
All right, so let's go ahead and do this, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and perform the roll call.
Yes, sir. Alderman Mathis? Here. Alderman Frazier? Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Irving?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
And Alderman Dillard?
Here.
Alfred McCann, so Alderman Frazier, Mayor.
And city attorney, are you here?
I'm sorry, Bob Latham, okay.
Okay, and let the minutes reflect that, city attorney. I mean, if it's, I would like to have Alderman Frazier here. Can Alderman Frazier? Alderman Frazier? Alderman Frazier? Alderman Smith, mute your phone, please. Alderman Frazier?
We've gotten two other callers in, don't know who they are.
Alderman Frazier, are you there?
We have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm muted for, we have a quorum.
All right, okay, well, let's go ahead on and proceed, city attorney?
Yes, sir, we need a motion from the board to authorize you to sign the letter together with Tony Moon from Water Works responding to the writ of first refusal.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Smith and second by Alderman Irving to execute the letter. Any unreadness on the motion? Was that you, Alderman Frazier, that came in?
Yes, sir.
All right, the motion, there's a motion and a second for the execution of the letter. Any unreadness? Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimously approved, a motion to adjourn will be in order.
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Mathis, I'm sorry, Ms. Mathis, yeah.
Be sure that the city clerk shows that Mr. Frazier did get back on before the vote, because we get a roll call.
Okay, let the minutes reflect that, Mr. Frazier did return back to open session.
Thank you, that's all.
Alderman Smith offered a motion, and it was seconded by who?
Irving.
Alderman Irving, it's not a debatable motion, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, be safe, God bless you all, good night.
Good night, everyone.
Hey, thanks, Dustin, great job.
Thanks, Mayor, take care, good night.
Good night.